Yeah, she's coming, but you can go ahead and start.
I want to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplinary, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. One, AFD Advisory Committee. Two, the Library Board. Three, New River Community College Board. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Third, fourth, fifth, sixth.
Any discussion? Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creese?
Hi.
Mr. King?
Hi.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Hatt?
Aye.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies to the best members' -- best of each member's knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And this certification is our word to you that we're only talking about things in closed session that we're supposed to be talking about. Is there a motion on certification?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Hatt?
Aye.
At this time, I will ask us all to rise and observe a moment of silence, and then I will ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge.
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is a Noel Bissell with the New River Valley Health District who's been selected as the new director for the -- our new health district.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come speak this evening. I've been in the position now as New River Health District Director for a few months, sort of learning the ropes, getting to meet everyone, and now I'm out on the tour, meeting everybody in the different localities, local governments, and our community partners that we're working with. I just wanted to show a face, put a name and a face together, and let you know that I look forward to ongoing collaboration with everybody in the Montgomery County District, who are obviously our biggest district, and very big support, and we really look forward to ongoing collaboration as we continue with our health department mission. I did want to let you know that Virginia Department of Health is sort of shifting a little bit, not totally in what we're doing, but we're going to be focusing more on a population health model. Population health really is that health is more than just the absence of disease. It is the total health, so it's physical, social, sexual, educational, emotional, and environmental health, and we're really looking to work on that with our partners for all of the residents of Montgomery County and the entire New River Health District. We have a lot of issues to address. I mean, we have substance abuse issues, we have obesity epidemic with chronic disease, we have tobacco use, we have the resurgence of vaccine-preventable diseases. Virginia has fallen much lower in our numbers as far as immunizing our children for vaccine-preventable diseases. Mental health, we all know we have a lot of issues with mental health. One of my biggest goals is to work to get back into our schools, to help with education, to work on immunizations, and to work on prevention. So we have several models that we are looking forward to presenting with our schools and working in collaboration with our school health advisory boards as well. The Virginia has -- Department of Health has also developed what's the Virginia Plan of Well-Being, and we're really going to focus on those four big aims. The first one is healthy, connected communities. So the way we're going to go about that is, again, education, economic stability. We know that so much of health outcomes are tied to socioeconomic status and social determinants of health. New River Valley is part of southwest Virginia, and our numbers aren't as good as other areas in the state when it comes to tobacco use, when it comes to chronic disease, when it comes to overall life expectancy and survival. So we're looking for opportunities to make some headway there. Strong start for children. That comes with preventable diseases, really encouraging vaccine-preventable diseases, and getting out there and helping to make that happen. We also need to work on risky behaviors. We do the youth risk behavior surveys, and we have some really startling numbers about some of the behaviors our teens are engaging in. So we really need to get them now. We need to work on teen pregnancy. We need to work on sexually transmitted diseases. We know that when we have a teen pregnancy, they drop out of school, and they don't get the education, and they don't end up with as productive of a life as they otherwise could. So we really want to make some headway there. Preventive actions. We actually don't do as well as other parts of the states in screening. We know that colon cancer screening, that breast cancer screening are all things that can prevent cancers or can catch them at an early stage to where they're very treatable. We're working on addressing issues that are barriers to care, whether it's transportation. We don't have good public transportation, so we're working with some of our community partners on those things. Again, education and access. We have an outstanding organization called PATH, Partnership for Access to Healthcare, that we're working together on some of these things. And then the last thing is the access to health care. So I just wanted to keep it short, did not want to take a lot of time on the agenda, but I did want to put a name and a face together, introduce myself, and say how I very much look forward to continued collaboration and working with everybody for Montgomery County residents, and thank you for those who are on my interview committee. So thank you very much for the time.
Does any board member have any questions they'd like to ask? Ms. Biggs?
Yes. I've been interested in this state well-being plan because I've heard it at the state level on a committee that I serve on from Dr. Hazel, so I was wondering, like, how do you see the intersection sort of of what you're doing with what we do here? Like, how is there going to be an involvement, or?
Well, we need your support. Obviously, we come to you, you know, for funding, and then the state helps to match the funding, so all of our programs, we need your support, and we also need our community sponsor, you know, our community advocate support, whether it's New River Community Services, whether it's community advocacy, community planning. So the biggest thing is all of our goals are the same, and so as we engage on some of these projects, I'll be coming to you, looking for your support for promotion. It changes the way we think a little bit, and we have to have some tough discussions. Tobacco use. Tobacco use is very high in this part of the state, and we know that tobacco use leads to a lot of long-term chronic medical conditions. So working out new programs, trying to get into not only with our local government but our local businesses, and working on those educational programs. A lot of what we need to do is educational, and we will need the financial support as well as the educational backing to introduce these programs. There's going to be some resistance, but we're hoping that together we can -- we have data. I have excellent data from our community health rankings. I have excellent data from our youth risk behavior surveys of things that we need to address.
Okay. So it's sort of like putting what we already have out there sort of more together under an envelope. Is that what -- that was what I was getting at the state level. And so that could even be your Chamber of Commerce to connect with the businesses, and we've got the university, and so it's just bringing everything together.
Right. There are so many partners out there, and a lot of our -- a lot of our community members don't even know the resources that they are for them.
Right.
They don't even know that these resources exist. So we're trying to get the word out. We're trying to be more preventive as opposed to reacting. We're trying to help in any way we can and bring everyone together in one room, on one platform, to address these issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a presentation by Preserve Montgomery County on the Mountain Valley Pipeline.
We have been working since you haven't seen it, but we've been working constantly. Tom put this really great PowerPoint presentation together, and these are the issues, okay. We went to the DEQ May 17th, and at that point in time, the DEQ had already decided that even without a completed permit by MDP, they were already setting up dates for hearings, like there was going to be, like they expected certification was going to go through. And then later, we found out that the DEQ's like, oh, we made a mistake. We aren't going to certify each individual crossing. It's not going to be 401 individual certifications. It's going to be a blanket permit, and the -- and there's hundreds of stream crossings, and here's the backtracking, and I mentioned that, and had set precedent undermining the legal authority of the DEQ to exercise water quality certifications in the future. In your packets, I did give you this sheet from Virginia, and I think I highlighted it. It says, "The reason for denial of a permit, the project, if the project will result in violations of water quality standards or will impair the beneficial uses of state waters." And that's certainly the case with five crossings just in our area, and we would potentially lose our well water and other things. They also, we put our letter in there to you, or to, we copied it to you, but it was to the governor, signed by residents in the Slushes Chapel area, Tom Adams and Tina also. This is the letter that we sent to the governor after we went to the meeting and spoke to the Water Board. We're asking for the DEQ. The DEQ is the, Virginia DEQ is the only agency that really cares about our Virginia waters. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers doesn't. I mean, they're just saying, is this navigable? Is this really going to impact it? But the DEQ is the only protection we have, and we feel that when the, when they backtrack on things and say, we're just going to do a generalized permit, they're not taking care of the citizens of Virginia. So we're here to ask you to contact the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality and ask them to do individual 401 certifications on our streams, because that is the only protection that Virginia has and Virginia waters have. This, of course, you probably recognize, this is where I live, basically where it says MDP I live, and where all the arrows, all the, these are all di-traced arrows that converge on one point, that Slushers Chapel cave. And it goes on down to Mill Creek, which goes onto the airport of the Roanoke River, the Roanoke River where Salem directly gets its water from, and also it impacts Cardinals Cove when they do draw water out of the Roanoke River. So sedimentation is definitely going to be a problem because you have the Jefferson National Forest, which is very steep, so when you do 125-foot slash, you're going to have a lot more soil erosion and sedimentation than you had before when you're crossing a number of streams. You also have continual problems with scouring, and Tom will talk more about that and refloes. This is a cave that is right under Mill Creek, very close to where it's less than a quarter of a mile from where the pipeline's going to go through. Just another look at it. Another concern is, this is a, and you have this in your packet also, this is a average number of incidents, pipeline incidents, failures. And you see, 2010 is about six times more than the past three decades, from 1980, 1990, and 2000. This could be because there, this is just like the gold rush, they're trying to do things so fast, they have inspectors, they vary before they look at them, maybe we're getting seals from somewhere else, who knows? But it's certainly, again, not anything at all comforting for looking at the previous picture where the pipeline is going to go through, crossing all our streams. This is, this is an example of a natural gas explosion, December 11th, 2012, on I-77, Sissons, West Virginia, and no inspection or testing for 24 years. That's what we can look forward to here. These are pipeline spills, these are pipeline spills from 1986 to 2016, and you can see that it gets to be more and more and more. People, you know, we may not know about this or be aware about this as much as somebody that lives in an area that has a lot of pipeline spills, because as you will notice, our area is white because we don't have pipelines through here, and actually, we are, this arrow can point to it, we are over in here. But this, this will change when we have a pipeline through of us. And I think this is time for time now, right? So I, final thing I want to say is, please contact the BDEQ if you need help or something, let us know, but at this point, we feel our government agency is the only one that can speak for us and contact the BDEQ and say, we need individual 401 certification on streams. This nationwide permit is not going to protect Virginia's streams and our water quality and our, you know, since you guys have no plans to put the money for infrastructure to give us water out there, you know, it's, it's going to be a really big problem for Montgomery County, because with blasting or anything else, people are going to have a lot of problems with their wells if they don't lose their water entirely. The other thing I'd like to ask you to do, when I was at the May 17th State Water Board Control Meeting, I sat behind James Golden, Operations Officer for DEQ, and I said, gee, I've been trying to get you out to see this Slushes Chapel, Mount Tabor area, because I feel it's important for them to see the on-the-ground thing, what's going to happen, what this area looks like. And I've been trying for quite a while with Melanie Davenport, and he said, well, you know, we've decided that there's so many requests for us to come out, that now you need to go through your local government agency and have them through request as well as we want to speak to them at the same time. So whatever you can do as soon as possible to get something, I mean, we will be available at any point in time to give them a tour from the top of Brush Mountain all the way to Mill Creek, which will take about an hour. But this is, if they're making this kind of decision that is so impacting on our county and our citizens, this is really important for them to be on the ground and actually look at what they're permitting. Thank you. Handing it over to Tom.
So there are three major issues with impacts on water quality. One is what Lynda talked about, and that's during construction and afterwards with all of these stream crossings and the sudden increased sedimentation in the streams that will affect water quality for domestic use and for commercial uses as well. But I'm going to focus on mostly the pipeline failures from natural geologic hazards, particularly from major storms. First, I want to establish my credentials. I'm a Ph.D. candidate in Civil and Environmental Engineering at Virginia Tech. I have 30-plus years of professional experience in hydrology and flood forecasting, 25 of years of which was with the National Weather Service and flood forecasting, and currently I'm a consultant doing mostly international work for the World Bank and others in countries like Romania, Pakistan, Vietnam, China, Panama. Published last year a book, International Global Perspective on Flood Forecasting by Academic Press. I want to look at the increased frequency and intensity precipitation. This is a statement from NOAA. You can see that we can expect increased storms of higher intensity, particularly in our area where you can see this dark blue area right over here is West Virginia and Western Virginia, where we should expect increased frequency of major flood events from heavy precipitation. And this is a, difficult to understand and see mapped purposely, because I want to point to the great number of hazards. The red areas are major landslide areas, according to the U.S. Geological Survey. The, you can't see the pipeline path, but all these yellow tick marks are small stream crossings of the pipeline, of which in Virginia there are hundreds of them. The blue dots are all wells, and not all of the wells in the area. The dark blue area is this harsh geologic terrain where the caves and the ground streams are located. Lynda pointed to the Slushes Chapel area, which is here. You can see the pipeline path with the stream crossings, just to give you some perspective. Here's Bloxburg in the screen area down here. So one of the major problems with these small stream crossings, and I have some really graphic images coming up, is, is the occurrence of debris flows, which scour stream channels incredibly in ways that you can't imagine, and you'll see some pictures. And the USGS says that every several years, heavy amounts of rainfall trigger, trigger a large number of debris flows within the central and southern Appalachian Mountains of the eastern United States. And if you look at the precipitation frequency, this is for one and 1,000-year events. You can see in the Greenbrier County area in West Virginia, which is not far from us, it's like a couple counties over, the thousand-year rainfall event would be on the order of seven to eight inches. Well, last year, right around my birthday, the area received over eight inches of rainfall, and this says, this is for a 24-hour total, but actually it occurred mostly in like six to eight hours, and it was really devastating. These types of events are occurring throughout the region and with greater frequency. So the impact is that with all of these stream crossings, the hundreds of them, the likelihood of failure is going to be really increased, and there are going to be major spills and explosions from the pipelines. In Madison County, Virginia, in 1995, had a major event, I have some pictures that I'll show you. The eight-hour storm produced more than 600 millimeters of rain. What's millimeter, right? But anyhow, it was on the order of some major flash flood events that historically throughout the United States. Well, that 600 millimeters of rain turns out to be 23.6 inches in eight hours. I mean, in this area where we are here, we receive about 38 inches of rainfall annually. Here's an example of the scour from a debris flow along the mountainside in Madison County. This is a map similar to what I showed previously, showing the height occurrence of landslides throughout the Appalachian region. The black dots are individual major landslide events. This is landslide and debris flows in Madison County from that 1995 event. You can see these deep scours through all these small streams, the ones that I pointed to were all these stream crossings from the pipeline that are going to occur. And this is a human being right here, probably about six feet tall, and you can see the depth of this scour from these small streams. This is what we can expect. It's not if it's going to happen, it's when it's going to happen. And with all the stream, small stream crossings, it's a certainty, it's just a matter of where exactly these types of events are going to occur. Here's another picture in the Shenandoah National Park, 1995. This is, this is a photograph from the newspaper. This is, I think, the Rapidan River crossing Route 29 north of Charlottesville. You can see it took out Route 29. Just devastating flood. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
I'm going to start off with Supervisor Shepherd. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask Supervisor Demott?
I've said several times, and you guys have heard me say it, there are so many reasons to be anti-pipeline, and I could list 10 reasons that I personally am anti-pipeline, but the first is, it is and has always been because of the devastating impact it will have on the environment. I, I am supportive of us contacting the DEQ if that's the direction that this board wants to go, and I appreciate very much your continued involvement and your continued time as you come here to make us aware of different ins and outs. I know this is a long and arduous process on your end to follow and stay informed, so thank you very much again for coming this evening.
Supervisor Biggs?
I agree with Supervisor Demott, but I would go one step further. First of all, can we go ahead and do something about contacting the BDEQ, but also this Mr. James Golden, can we also contact him to come? I understood they were saying if it comes from us, maybe he would actually come, is that correct?
He and Melanie Davenport.
Both of them, okay.
Melanie's the manager. He's the operations guy.
Got you. Okay.
Supervisor?
I've got a question, Mr. Tucker. When would we take action on this?
I was going to, let's see if there was any other questions, and then see if there's action and see if there was consensus, and I'm looking at Marty. To one, and I'll tell you, I'm looking at the letter that was sent by, and I, one of the delegates, and I was thinking something consistent with that, as well as an invitation, but I wanted to give the other supervisors opportunity to ask Supervisor Perkins?
I want to detail what Marion April said, but I also just want to make a comment that last Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday, I went out through Preston Forest, through Mount Tabor, down into all of that area that's going to be covered by the pipeline again. And to me, to have it go through there would be devastating to the environment. I mean, I just can't even imagine. Plus, it's such a lovely area, and, you know, we want to be certain that our water is clean, that we, you know, take care of what we've got, and I am just totally even more convinced that this is the wrong place. Not that I want to shift it to somebody else's yard at all, but it's the wrong place, the wrong thing, the wrong time, but I do think there are some, I think clean water is a basic that we
You can't get it back.
No. It's, we have to have it. And as I was looking through that area, frankly, I didn't see a lot where it would be wonderful to have a pipeline to go through there to do all those things, you know? So anyway, I agree, and if for nothing more than just the war, as Mr. Demott said, there are lots of reasons to oppose it, but to me, that is one of the most critical, is we just can't, can't let it go by. And I think we need to, you know, for a while, we've been, we worked hard on it, but we need to do some things again now that will help us to be more proactive, as you say, or preventative than what we have even done thus far. And we've, I think as our board, we've done a lot, and we've opposed the issue from very beginning, but I agree with whoever said that there are just so many facets to what will occur when you put such facility through our area. So, thank you. So thank you for bringing that up, and I appreciate it.
Supervisor Creek?
Yes, I'd like to say that I'd like to see this board do anything and everything if they possibly can to get on top of this thing and stop it where it's at until we can get into a courtroom and see if we can do something about it. We'll never do it by sitting here talking about it. And we'll never do it by riding up and down the road. If we can afford to have at least one person somewhere pay them to get out here and hit this thing every week and have something that they can come up with, it just might help. It would be a wonderful thing because I don't think that any of us wants what we're going to have if we don't do it.
In regards to what's before the board, is there a consensus about, and I've got this letter from, and...
Can we add something to it? Can we send a letter requesting our Congress and Senators in DC to also contact?
I would say.
We can send it to them directly as well as the DEQ. So I guess we wanted to go out sooner rather than later. Is there, I guess, consensus to allow me to sign that letter? All right. And then also with the invite, and I have a feeling we'll be working around their schedule, but put an open invite to both of those officials.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Just one final comment. We don't want to have the pipeline rerouted. We want it stopped completely.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. And let's see. I believe the next item on our agenda is public address. We have several folks signed up. We'll go through the names of the folks who've signed up, and then if there's any other individuals that wish to speak, we'll allow them the opportunity as well. This is the board's chance to listen to you, not to respond. And each individual will have five minutes. I would ask them to state their name and address. The first on our list is Marty Gordon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Board Supervisors, County Administrator. I apologize. I should have sent a letter of appreciation before now or at least come here. But Craig Metz has been doing a super job and had really bent over backwards to allow me some leeway on a project that's been my pet project for at least 15 years before Craig came here, and that was our eagle. I want to first of all thank the county for the restoration work that was done. It looks beautiful. It went down there when it was lowered in by the crane. Now, I'm not completely happy that it didn't make where it's supposed to be, and I have a framed copy of the original sketch of the new courthouse, that the bay window is where the eagle is supposed to be. So every time I pass the courthouse, I do wish it was there where it was supposed to be overlooking Main Street. But Craig knows that I have done a lot of research on this eagle. We discovered it was donated to the county by an anonymous donation. I have worked, I'd say for at least 12 years trying to find out who that donation was. We can't find any documentation in the county. Any record books are in the museum, so I've practically given up on that. So the next step was to figure out where it came from and if there was an artist. Well, in cooperation with the restoration company when he first came in here, the restoration guy, I can't remember his name, I haven't remembered it up to today, I forgot, but we examined, we got up and with a microscope practically with a magnifying glass and looked at every inch of that eagle. There's no signature. Now, I have discovered that there's two brother eagles or sister eagles, I'll think of this lady. One is on a private property in Lynchburg where Lynchburg Casting was originally located, that cast the eagle. The other one is on the old Roanoke County Courthouse that is now part of Roanoke College. Roanoke College staff was nice enough to go up onto the roof and examine their eagle and found nothing. So the restoration company did research and discovered that it was over 150 of this eagle cast at the Lynchburg Casting Company, and they're scattered all over the country. So we still don't know who the anonymous donor was that paid for the purchase that gave it to Montgomery County. Now, through the restoration company, I do point out, we discovered three things that during the time, and somebody who's seen the historical photos, when it was taken down off of the clock and taken off of the original courthouse, it was set on the side of the courthouse. Well, crews knocked it over. The three indentions that the restoration company had to initially take care of, we discovered in historic photos, when they first brought it down off the base, was fine. And then later, when they put it in a wooden cradle, it had three indentions on it. That was the indentions that the county had to repair. One had a bee's nest in it, the other one had a bird's nest in it, and it was more damaged than we'd ever thought once he got into it and looked at it. I'm very happy that it's the way it looks now, but I want to bring at least three things to your attention. Craig and myself have talked about this. We need to have a rededication ceremony of where it is. And I would like to work with county staff and try to do something this fall to rededicate the eagle. As part of that, we never finished this project. Now, when I say that, if you look at the base of the eagle, and it was Steve Phillips' idea to do it this way, if there is a place, and the restoration company asked about it, for a time capsule. We need to put that time capsule together and embed it in the bottom of the eagle. I think it's fitting to do that. The other two things, I have started in cooperation with the museum and other historic people in the community, the former group called Guardians of the Eagle. And it's going to be a citizens group that's going to always look after the eagle and do different things. As part of that, in cooperation with the Montgomery County Museum, who was looking for ways to raise money on a continuation basis, we're going to do Christmas ornaments with the first one being the eagle. We're still working out the details, and we hope to have it by the fall, and that we'll bring that to you and present it to you, that hopefully the eagle will be one of the first. Because we did it with the Newry Valley Arts Council over in Pulaski, and ended up doing the Pulaski County Courthouse and several other things in Pulaski, and it was great money. Raised a lot of money for the Arts Council and hoping to do it for the museum. But I want to publicly come and bring to you, because a lot of humans who are known that's been here airing the net, the eagle. I even convinced Wayne Brockenbar, when he bought the newspaper back 15 years ago, to put the eagle on the masthead for two years, and that's how important the eagle was to him too. So I carried that flag and finally gained the eagle done again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marty.
The next speaker is Sandra Sladecker.
Sandra Sladecker, 4254 Fortress Drive, excuse me, Blacksburg, Virginia. I just want to say that I am in support of your writing a letter to DEQ. And I also am not sure what can be done tonight, but I'm hoping that the tractor trailers are going to be prohibited from traveling on the Mount Tabor Road due to a wide variety of things. First, the delays that can happen for first responders. We've all seen pictures in the paper of total blockage of that road when there's a problem with the sunnies. There are also codes, Virginia Code 46.2-804 prohibiting crossing double yellow lines, which in order for the tractors to get around that curve, I assume everybody's been there to see that, but it's really a difficult place. There's been damage to the guardrails, and any type of accident is going to delay citizens from getting to work, school appointments, et cetera. So I hope that whatever you all can do to prohibit this, you will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Linda Majors.
Linda Majors, 2620 Mount Tabor Road, Blacksburg. I totally agree with whatever Sandy said about the hairpin curve there, and I assume that from your agenda that it's just a matter of setting up a date for a public hearing. So it sounds, I knew you guys were totally in support of this, and it just takes a while to get things moving, so thank you.
Next speaker is Thomas Adams.
Thomas, 1724 Sage Lane, Blacksburg. I just want to, I'm in full agreement with the previous speakers in opposition to the truck traffic that'll be on these small county roads. They're going to be a nightmare for repair for you all, and I'm sure you're aware of that, and as well as a danger to people who need emergency services, local traffic. So I also support, you know, some measure against it. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Michelle Dykstra.
I'm Michelle Dykstra from your neighbor to the east, right? That's where I am now. And serve on Roanoke City Council. So thank you all for everything that you all do, although I am not here in that capacity this evening. I did want to come tell you all, give you a little bit of information about Boys and Girls Club in Roanoke. We are Boys and Girls Club of Southwest Virginia, and I'm the executive director. And I just wanted to let you all know that some of your schools here in Montgomery County have reached back out to Boys and Girls Club asking for assistance in after-school programming. And so I wanted to contact you all, and I've emailed a couple, and just wanted to let you all know a little bit about what we do as Boys and Girls Club. Boys and Girls Club is a national organization that's been around for 165 years, and as a local chapter, we have been in existence for 20 years, celebrating our 20th anniversary. We provide after-school care in a variety of settings, specifically in Roanoke at a Ninth Street location where we have an onsite after-school location serving 150 Roanoke City, Roanoke County, and Salem school students every single day. And then here in Montgomery County, we are looking to have site-based, school-based after-school programming. And our hope is to have this up and running in the 2017, 2018 school year, specifically East Montgomery High School, Christiansburg, and Shawsville Middle Schools. And East Montgomery High School is going to be a partnership that we are really excited about in particular. That is the one that we are working to fund without 21st Century Programming. And for those of you who may be aware, Boys and Girls Club has been in Montgomery County previously. We did serve in several different schools here using that 21st Century funding in the past, and the grant was not re-awarded for this past school year. And it's actually, it's been good for us to hear back from those schools, to understand when they came to us this year and said, "We really want you back," because the administrative side of running the after-school program, the cost of running the after-school program for the school system has been prohibitive, and it's been, it's been a lot on your teachers and staff here. So I just wanted to come and give you all a little bit of information, wanted you to be able to put a face to a name, so that if you do, and hopefully, you know, been able to meet some of you in various events in my other capacity as well. But we are really excited to be coming back to Montgomery County. We do hold the charter for all of Southwest Virginia, and so we will be looking to make sure that we are able to serve as many students as possible in that after-school component. We focus on three core pillars, which is the academic piece. All of our students do homework for at least an hour every single day after school, where we match them with tutoring and mentoring when needed and as appropriate. We focus on healthy lifestyles, which is not only healthy eating, but healthy activity, and working with them on just what it means to be able to be, to take care of yourself. And then we also work with all of our students on good character and citizenship. And so we are working to produce well-rounded students that are ready for high school graduation and whatever may come after high school graduation. We boast 100% graduation rate for students who are in Boys and Girls Club through their senior year. So I just wanted to, as I said, let you all know that this is something that we are really, really excited about. We're going to be coming to, you're going to see my face here a lot more as I work to build relationships with your constituents here in Montgomery County. And so I thank you all for all the work that you do, and I hope that you all will be supportive of Boys and Girls Club coming in to serve in your community. We will be looking to make sure that your community is just involved with us as we are with you, because this is not just a one jurisdiction organization. This is something that we have service to provide across this whole region. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. Say hello to Mr. Ferris for me.
Oh, absolutely. Well.
Next speaker is Mode Johnson.
Mode Johnson, 3030 Mount Tabor Road. Just like to echo previous comments, and thank you and my courage and support to public hearings that you're going to have on the Mount Tabor Curve, and hopefully that will reach a safe conclusion for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all the speakers that are signed up this evening, but you don't have to have signed up. If there are other folks that would like to speak, if you would come on down to the front row, and that way I'll just call you in order.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Douglas White, 760 Triangle Street. I spent my afternoon trying to inform residents of Harding Road that we're not talking about a boundary adjustment tonight, I don't think. It's not clear. Historically, they just take it off the agendas. But it reminded me of an email that I sent in December, and that you're receiving the email, and I believe that Mrs. Sweeney was as well. So here we are. The town has a fundamental responsibility to inform the community at large of its intentions regarding the boundary line adjustment. During the meeting, the town attorney distributed a document that the town would like to use in regards to guiding principles of the document for their position on how the boundary adjustment would occur. That document was summarized in a PDF that is available online at dhc.gov or virginia.gov. It outlines a section of the state code. During the meeting, several people, including myself, questioned whether we could use proffers to the boundary line agreement, and the town suggested that we could not. Later in discussions with this board, it was agreed that proffers can be used in boundary line adjustments. So how do we have differing views? Well, we have different code sections, and this is important as we're at a pause apparently over what to do with the boundary adjustment. The answer is related to the level of disagreement that may or may not occur between the town and the county. If everyone agrees without issue, the state code sections 15.2-3106 through 3108 would guide a process to an agreement without conditions or proffer between the town and the county. Once the agreement was ratified by the government, a single judge reviews the boundary and no legal public notice requirements, no provisions for intervention by the parties exist in that format. There isn't other state code section, and this state code section is 15.2-2320, I'm sorry, 3231. So once again, 15.2-3231 through 3235. The town and the county will arrive at an agreement with proffers ratified by both parties, that would include us as the county residents, into the proffered agreements. Once the municipalities have decided upon the terms of the agreement, the proposal would be presented to the Commission on Local Government. The commission conducts its own independent public hearings. Once the hearings have concluded, the commission allows the adoption of the agreement. The commission also has the process, also has process if parties do not agree, and can ratify agreements through regional courts or special courts established in the state of Virginia under sections 15.2-3209, outline significant levels of consideration being missed in today's conversations regarding the property and its geological ramifications. It is my opinion, and it has been my opinion, that if all the information about this area is on the table, you will use the second set of state codes and allow for some guarantees. This section of land, when we started the arguments in 2008, was A1. It's now urban expansion, and this urban expansion is all the way to the basin of Happy Hollow. If we are planning an expansion on that side of town, we need to plan for the expansion. That would be a sewage pump station, maybe in the basin of Luster's Gate, maybe in the basin of Happy Hollow Basin. I appreciate that we're taking a pause. I spent my afternoon trying to calm nerves because it's cloudy again. If it's cloudy, come to your people and ask your people for clarification. The document set is huge now. We have the data. We just need the officials to come. And to that point, I'd like to thank you for sending the county's engineer last Tuesday to the property to understand what's happening there. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there another person that came forward? You're behind the screen. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Yeah. Hi, Margaret Austin at 2124 Mount Tabor Road, Blacksburg. And along with, thank you. And allow them, thank you again for allowing me to speak. Obviously, Mount Tabor Road should have a ban on vehicles that cannot easily negotiate the curves as it now, as it is now. Someone will die from an accident, and as, or a stuck vehicle will be blocking emergency personnel and cause major disaster. So I'm glad you guys are sort of thinking the same way. Also, I'm here tonight to urge the Board of Supervisors to do absolutely everything it can to insist that the state of Virginia act to protect our water supply from the Mountain Valley Pipeline. Obviously, you're definitely pushing in that direction. However, as further motivation, if the MVP is not stopped immediately upon approval for the project, the Board of Supervisors will need to be poised to have funds and construction plans at the ready for immediately installing infrastructure to serve all the areas which will be damaged by the project. This will be needed to serve all the households, farms, and businesses anywhere within a half-mile either way of the pipeline and all the way to the neighboring counties, county lines, and anywhere else can be documented that polluted waters will flow. Be one heck of a big bill. It is not fair that all these families currently with fragile wells would have to wait for safe drinking water and fire protection to be available. They have a right to have fire hydrants very close to their homes and investments. After all, they pay taxes, and people elsewhere in the county have these services, and it's pretty obvious that their drinking water will be threatened, and their lives and homes will be at risk of massive fires. That was well proven. By having water available, they have a chance of being able to soak their homes as fires approach, even if they can't do anything about being blasted over. The danger will start immediately. The heavy equipment will be leaking much toxic fluids on the hillsides and valleys and the bare ground they will be creating. The ground laid there will erode and foul the waters for decades to come, starting immediately, because of the scale of the project. The herbicide sprayed regularly will run right into the drinking water. The water used to test the new pipes will disrupt the supply of water so much that unusual patterns of water will be created. Again, this is all just under construction. Then this water will be used for testing, the water used for testing will be flushed quickly, carrying construction toxins rapidly into the drinking water as the test water is dumped into the earth. My expectation is this is more than just thousands of gallons of water, and it's coming fast. The digging, blasting, boring, and general shaking in the fragile hillsides and karst terrain will disrupt the normal flow of the water, both making new fissures directly, directing surface water more quickly deep into the earth, and also disrupting the subsurface and subsurface flow of the water. Again, this will be happening just as they start working. The inevitable collapse of our meandering country roads will require more roadwork and its inherent pollution and erosion issues. Oversized vehicles on our narrow wiggly roads will result in accidents and resulting spills. Mount Tabor Road is a classic example of that kind of curve. It's just incredible. This is just a partial list of what will happen just due to the construction. We are all fully aware of what a catastrophic leak and explosion will do. Water will be needed in huge amounts as close as possible to the fires. The best plan of action now is to insist that the, that the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality do what it's supposed to do and protect each and every stream, watershed, et cetera. DEQ needs to hire more qualified inspectors to be onsite during construction through perpetuity or the removal of the pipeline, whichever comes first. I suggest reminding them of that fact. If DEQ truly does its job, this pipeline will not be built in the seismically active karst region. Please keep taking very strong actions, demanding that the state provide funds for us to protect ourselves, or insist that the state of Virginia stand up for the common good and protect its citizens, especially in light of the fact that the current administration of the United States appears to be ignoring this responsibility to the American public. As usual, thank you all for all you're doing on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward to speak to the board? Seeing no one else coming forward, I'm going to go ahead and close public address. I don't believe that there is an addendum. Is there a motion regarding consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Ms. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
The property is located at 4237 Prices Fork Road, identified as Tax Parcel 52-A-50A, Parcel ID 220104. In the Prices Fork Magisterial District, the property currently lies in an area designated as a village expansion in the 2025 comprehensive plan and further designated as a mixed use in the Prices Fork Village Plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Is somebody here for them?
I don't know if there's anyone from Balser or not.
I don't see anyone. I did want to make clear that I spoke with the residents beside of that property, the ones that I were concerned with because of that new road they're talking about putting in. And they assured me they were okay with it as long as they get a privacy fence and the proper protection so they don't have to see any vehicles, is basically what she said. I talked to Joe Forty-Eight again today, and he assured me that that would happen.
Okay.
So I'm comfortable with it.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
No, but I did talk with some of the people just that he has talked about, and I think that's what they really want, is some way to just kind of set that aside so that it doesn't interfere with their property.
There's a motion and a second, and there being no further discussion. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Huts.
Next is new business. Schedule public hearing to request the Virginia Department of Transportation to restrict truck traffic and trailer or semi-trailer combinations on State Route 624, Mount Tabor Road slash Newport Road in Montgomery County. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we need to make one clarification to this. In order to get the advertising that we need to get proper for the public hearing, the public hearing needs to be on Monday, July 10th. We caught that after the resolution was drawn up, but instead of Monday, June 26th, the public hearing needs to be Monday, July 10th.
Would you accept that friendly amendment to your motions?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please, to the amended resolution?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Huts.
Resolution regarding First Amendment to a lease agreement with Cascade Capital Partners Four LLC, specifically on the North Franklin Street property. For those interested, this is where the magistrate's office has been located, and also the reassessment office has been located years ago. It was First National Exchange Bank, Dominion Bank, and it sits right next to First Union. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Huts.
Subject C, resolution affirming the county and Montgomery commitment to environmental-friendly practices and policies. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I actually do have something that I want to say, and I'll keep it brief. First, thank you, Chair Tuck, for your willingness to both allow this resolution on the agenda tonight, as well as your support in its preparation. This resolution is very important to me, and that's why I felt it necessary to bring forward. There are so many reasons to love this wonderful county, but chief among them is the overwhelming natural beauty of our area. The natural resources we enjoy here, the beauty of nature and wildlife in our waterways, are a major contributor to the overall high quality of life and strong economy of this great county. And this resolution shows our board's willingness to consider environmental protection and preservation when making decisions, creating policies, and championing causes in our community. Several months ago, I requested that our county administrator look into an award from the Virginia Association of Counties, Go Green Virginia. The Go Green Virginia Initiative recognizes that communities need to take innovative steps to reduce energy usage and promote sustainability. It's designed to encourage implementation of specific environmental policies and practical actions that not only reduce our carbon emissions, but can also save local governments money. The award would allow Montgomery County to call itself a green government and would further display this board's dedication to preserving our wonderful natural beauty here at home. This resolution is a step towards achieving this prestigious designation, and if we received the award, we would be one of the lone counties in southwest Virginia ever to achieve that goal. I hope to have my colleagues' support on this resolution tonight. I think it sends a strong message from all of us, not only to the folks that live in Montgomery County right now, but also the future generations that will live here, that we value protection of our environment and support policies and practices that allow us to show our commitment to environmental protection through our actions and decisions. Thank you all very much for your consideration of this resolution tonight.
Other discussion? I would just like to say-
Amen.
-say thank you for allowing me to be a part of this, to agree and to compromise on certain language. But I look at the solar and wind industries as the future. I think that we're seeing more and more, whether it be, we're starting to hear about shingles, they're going to be generating solar power. Well, those are going to be, they're going to be, there is going to be a need to manufacture those someplace, and I'd like to see Montgomery County be one of those places. And by these type of resolutions, I believe it's saying to those type of companies, come here, we're going to work with you, just like we worked together on this. And so I'm very proud to be voting for this this evening. Is there any further discussion?
Nope. I'd just say amen again.
Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Huts.
Next on the agenda, county attorney's report.
No reports.
County administrator's report.
No report this evening.
What?
(laughing).
I might need to ask.
See if he's awake.
You feeling okay?
It's been a long night.
Next up is Supervisor Shepherd.
I just want to say thank you to Jennifer for her help gathering some information for me today for a report.
Supervisor Creed?
No.
Supervisor Perkins?
I do have a report, but it's to ask, again, I don't have a resolution written yet, but I would suggest that, as we are not discussing the property today, that we have a community meeting in that area, very similar to what April had for her school issue, for the school issues. But we have a community meeting to find out, get more information about what the people in that area, what they think, what they feel, and also what they see as a problem with this boundary adjustment that we've proposed again. This is an area in my district of the county that we've gone over this maybe two or three times, but each time, there has been a question as to what we will do with the infrastructure. And that's the same thing that's going on now. And there was a lady here last meeting that spoke very eloquently about what it would do to her water and to a lot of other people who are around that area. I also received several phone calls from, one from a longtime resident there who was, again, concerned with the infrastructure problems and issues that arise with that piece of land, and also with very many houses that will be there and the actual... I'm trying to think. The actual things that would have to be put into the area in order to have appropriate care for sewer and water and disposal of sewer. It would have to be the tanks that you know, that you put in the ground.
And part of the reason I did not have it on the agenda tonight was I spoke to several members who said they wanted to gather more information. I don't mind saying, I'm struggling. I believe by right, they're going to be able to put in a lot of septic tanks and a lot of wells. And there's a lot of concern about, and that's what these folks can do now. I worry about the traffic on the roads, I worry about the traffic going back down into Luster's Gate, and at the same time, I will say, it seems like if they were on town sewer and town water, that would alleviate some concerns, but I-
Yeah, I understand that the town, or information came to me, and I may be incorrect, so you can help me with this, that the town didn't plan to do anything with their sewer and the water, other than, you can put the water in, but with the sewer, it's not going to work, you're going to have to have the septic tanks that are in there.
As I understand it, that's not correct. When Mr. Poff came in my under, the information I gathered is that they would be hooking up, but they would have to upgrade the sewer system to be able to handle the sewer. But that's why we're going through this process, to gather a lot of information, but that is my understanding. And if you wish to hold a meeting at the rec center, I know that we would have the staff to support you in that and reach out and to have that public hearing, public meeting. I don't know, is there, when do we want to put this back on the agenda to talk about?
Well, I agree with Ms. Perkins that there should be a community meeting, and the thing is that the citizens that are going to be in the county, there's nothing to really give them a say-so, once that land goes into the town boundary, if something were to happen to their water or whatever. And so it would be interesting to find out, you know, what their thoughts are, if it's true that we can't work out anything between the town and the county as far as, like, if A occurs and B happens, and these people lose their water, who's going to be responsible for that? Well, it's going to be us.
Right, and I knew that Mr. Moss did reach out to the town of Blacksburg, and they indicated they would not extend water or sewer.
Well, that was just two members of town council, but they were pretty quick to answer that there would be no extension.
And that's traditionally been the town's policy, irregardless, is it's got to come in, it's got to be brought in as a boundary adjustment to extend utilities.
Well, that's what has stopped this process.
And I didn't, I'm sorry.
Has stopped this process all along. Every town comes up, it has to do with, if we release this boundary and we release it to the town, what then is going to happen, not only to the citizens we still have, but to the people that are around there? And so there, what I understand is that there's a lot of car territory there, there's a lot of areas that they can't really build in, and therefore, it has to be a very compact situation for the buildings. So whatever is there, it's all due to that infrastructure primarily. And I think that before we release that boundary to the town, that we have an obligation to look at what is going on there, and we still, they are our citizens until that's released. And so I would like to have, not only, you know, I'd like to have the people around, I've had several people who, as I say, have called me, and they're very concerned. It's not that they don't want the land developed, but they're just concerned about, well, what's going to happen to our citizens then and to people who come in to live there, so-
Well, do you think that you will be able to do those things by the second meeting in July?
I don't see why not, if I get-
Does that give you enough time?
Yeah, if I get support from some of the staff, if that's okay with Mr. Meadows and with his staff, and also from the board here, we need to, because we all have to vote on what's going on there. And I don't mean to just delay the situation just for the sake of delaying it, but I mean for serious consideration and for getting information from the town too, as to what are their plans now. And of course, the town council will change, there are several vacancies among the council members, but what I want is what we are going to be able to establish now.
Okay, and Marty, there's no timeline, we have no strict timelines, so if that, what we can, I'd like for the Poff to at least know, hey, this is when they're going to make their decision. I'd like the citizens to know, this is when they're going to make their decision. So let's, if that's okay, that's the second meeting in July.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
Well, I hope so. We would have to get the information out to the citizens that are there, as well as to the Poffs, and let them know.
Well, I know that Mr. Poff is here, so I'm sure, in regards to that, so I know that they're going to know about it.
And to the point that you were making earlier about if the land was developed, as it is right now in the county, with the current zoning and several houses were put there, then those houses would have to have sewer and well, you know, they'd have to have septic dug, which could be possibly more of a problem for county residents that are on, that are already using sewers and wells. But I do think it's, I like the idea of coordinating a community-based meeting, and then also, I've communicated to staff several questions that I have, as well as stormwater, sewage-type concerns.
And maybe we could also send, in the interim, a formal letter to the entire town council, making sure to clarify if we have citizens who are having well issues as a result of development on that land, if they would be allowed to hook up. The sewer isn't as a big issue-
Right.
-but the water, it is.
Yeah, access to water is line.
And so, is there consensus that we would have staff send a letter to that effect to the town council and ask for them to let us know something by the second meeting in July?
Sure. I think so. Well, and anyway, thank you.
I'm seeing everybody nod their heads, but is that, everybody okay with that?
I would like to know if they agree, if they say, if the town says that it's going to extend the water or sewer, if that really is what it's at, when? What do they have in mind as to, thinking about what April just said, the citizens who move in there and the citizens around, are they going to do it right away?
Well, I think that would be, I don't know that the town can look into the future and say, okay, this is when the developer's going to do it, because at this point in time, as I understand from what the Poff said, and please, folks, correct me, they had not, do not have a developer in mind.
Okay.
And so, I think it would be hard for us to expect the town to say, tell us what you're going to do.
No, well, if you have, if they have a developer in mind, and they intend to develop it soon, how soon do, does the town really think, how long does it take to put that kind of infrastructure in? I have no idea.
I just don't know that the town's going to be able to provide us that answer. I think that's going to have to be something to the developer, but we don't, they don't have a developer.
Well, they'd have to indicate a willingness to even consider it to begin with.
Yes.
I was thinking of, for the, and maybe I'm getting confusing apples and oranges, I was thinking about, okay, they've taken the Poff property, and her question was, how soon do they put in water and sewer there?
Once it's developed, once they have it developed.
That is going to be a developer making that decision, because they're going to make the developer upgrade the sewer.
Right, as soon as he puts it in.
Or were you asking about connecting water to Krista, who's well is bad?
I was talking about connecting water to the residents that could be right over that line, who as a result of development, no longer have access to potable water in their home.
And the same thing is true for the Sopos, they would no longer have-
Who has gotten the responsibility to do?
As far as right now, they are in the county, and so they would go into water and sewer, and we have no plans for the PSA to go that far out. I mean, that-
We don't have any service anywhere near there.
I mean, there's no service anywhere close, so it's all, you know, just like my house, and I don't know how many others of us who are on well and, you know, septic, but it's, that's where we're at with that property. And that's why I think the property owners want to go into the town, is to have that water and sewer option.
Right, and that, what I'm saying is, if that's what the town decides to do, and they're going to extend it, it goes as the buildings are put, I know, are put there. I mean, you know, that's part of the building construction and what have you. I just want to be absolutely certain that the citizens don't necessarily have to put in septic tanks and then receive water until the town decides.
I don't think the town allows for septic tanks inside of town.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
So once we give this to the town of Blacksburg, if they want, they're stuck at that point in time, they've got to hook up the sewer.
Okay. I just want to be certain that the people that are, you know, that were town citizens, that we give them some thought as to what is happening.
Thank you. Supervisor Biggs?
I just wanted to say that I attended a meeting last Wednesday, I guess, in Alberta, Virginia, which is in the middle of Halifax County. It was a VACO regional meeting where people brought their concerns, and the three top concerns they had, which I thought were interesting, because we reflect back to some that we've had, solar, broadband, and recycling. And on the solar issue, one of the things that arose was that since there's a lot of farmland there and it's flat, that a lot of solar companies are coming in, trying to buy up the land, and the good news is for farmers, you know, they're getting quite a bit for rent, or if the land's going to be sold, but basically, it's going to be rented, but then it's also going to raise the property values of people next door to the solar farms. And so they're, right now, trying to really look at what they should have as a county policy, and this has led to a movement within VACO that perhaps there needs to be a task force to actually work on this, because this is going to become something that is very widespread, and I know it's even here around, and around our area. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, that this seems to be a need across the state that needs to be addressed, and VACO's going to try to work on that, and along with the broadband issue. It was very interesting, they had, Senator Ross was there, and he suggested that perhaps that the counties look at working together, because everyone sort of has their own fees for broadband and wireless and everything, but if you're really going to try to bring it in, perhaps you're going to need to be willing to give up a little bit of your authority to make it a more regional approach. So there seems to be a movement to look at that during the next general assembly session, and they're open to ideas of what do counties think about that. So I just thought I'd throw that out, so you know that these things were being discussed across the state.
Thank you. Supervisor Demoss?
Two things. The first one, as we look into budgeting and employees in our next budget cycle, I'm just going to throw out an idea, I would like to examine the feasibility of employing a full-time sustainability manager for the county. I would imagine that a position like this would be responsible for projects throughout all levels of the county, to include energy efficiency and weatherization for facilities, examination of our fleet vehicles and fuel consumption costs, waste diversion programming, greenhouse gas emissions benchmarking and reduction, stormwater quality studies, conservation program, water conservation programs, alternative transportation programs, I could literally go on and on, and on and on and on, but I'll stop there. There are measurable benefits in terms of real dollar savings, as well as carbon footprint reduction, to have a dedicated employee in this role, and I think it would be a nice pairing with the resolution we adopted tonight, as well as continuing to go for the Go Green Virginia Award. I think it would be a real asset to the county, and would help us make sure that our community can be made even greater by ensuring our environmental health and vibrancy for generations. And the other thing, and somewhat-
Oh, can I add something to what she's saying? Is that okay, Krista?
Sure.
Okay.
If she doesn't mind.
I don't mind.
This is something that I've been thinking about, and our county is really growing, and I think Supervisor Demoss has brought up a very important aspect of what we need to be doing to prepare for our future and for our citizens, and this is all connected to quality of life. But along with that, it's my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you know our frozen positions that we've had for a long time? It seems to me that staff has had to take on a lot of extra duties, because we don't perhaps have some staff in place that are needed. And what I would like to suggest, and I don't know if I'd have support for this, because, you know, it just sort of occurred to me when she was speaking of that position, is there any way to get an update from our county administration about, you know, staffing needs? We never really talk about it, we just sort of say, well, we didn't fill the staffing needs. Well, okay, but, you know, maybe we ought to look at that and see, is there something that's missing that we need to be addressing that's of critical need? Because what I've experienced is, when you keep giving people more and more to do, sometimes that leads to burnout, because there's only so many hours in the workday. So I would be interested in finding out, are there any key positions that we really need to look at and maybe think about during the next budget cycle?
All right.
Sure.
All right. Back to me. And this is somewhat related to proposing, looking at a sustainability manager for the county. I recently met with Bill Long, who is our Assistant General Services Manager, I hope I got that title correct.
That's right.
About the Go Green Virginia Initiative, just kind of doing a progress check with him, and he shared with me a publication, and I think we've all received copies of it, but I wanted to make sure citizens were aware that it exists. It's called Wonderful Water, especially as much as we've been talking about water tonight. Got some extra of these. It talks about how to conserve water, and then also how to protect stormwater and runoff from becoming unnecessarily polluted. So if anybody wants a copy of that, please feel free, and that's all.
Supervisor King?
I'm tired. I would like to see if we could get back in having community meetings now, Ms. Perkins brought that up. I think the last one we had was in Alliston.
It's been a couple of years.
Oh, you mean like those community strand meetings that we had?
Yes.
Yeah, we need to get back to that.
That would be nice.
We should do.
Very nice.
Yeah.
We'll look out into the fall and see what we can-
I think tomorrow.
Maybe, but.
I think when some of these issues come up, it would certainly be helpful if we'd already been meeting with community areas and to see what their needs are. And face to face, I mean, you hear from some people in a community, but we would hope that at a community meeting, we'd have a very large gathering, and it would cut across the strata of the community.
Number two is, have we heard from the attorney in PC? Where are we at on that?
Not since we filed our comments on the draft.
Okay. And I'd like to bring us up disposal boxes for flags for VACO, they supply them at fire stations and rescue squads and Mayberry County building, for citizens that has flags.
That's that thing that was in, yeah, NACO had something a while back about-
Everybody's got a copy of it if you read it. April.
I haven't read it yet, sorry. That's your sustainability.
It gives people a place to take their flag, so they could be respectfully disposed of. I would like to see if we could get a consensus, since Mr. Meadows can do that.
Everybody in faith?
Absolutely.
Is it all right if I ask a staff person to help me?
I'll just see you do it.
Okay. No sweat.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll email them soon as we're done.
All right, I appreciate it. And Ms. Carroll, thank you for the conversation today. That's all.
Thank you. I believe Ms. Carroll's in charge of the heat in this room.
I cannot touch.
We did talk about that today.
I am very comfortable in here.
I'm perfectly comfortable, but I can-
Well, that being said, I've got a couple of things. One, as you all know, we'll be having a public meeting on the sign ordinance changes, our next meeting. I am meeting with a group of concerned citizens about our sign ordinance changes at Lucy Monroe's next Tuesday, and told those folks I would meet with them, but anyone who wants to come, I think they'd be more than welcome. In addition to that, there's a couple of other meetings.
What time?
I believe they've got me there at 6:00. Hold on one second, I'll double-check.
I feel like somebody should be singing the Jeopardy music.
Yeah.
6:00, Lucy Monroe's.
Okay, on the 20th?
Yes.
Okay.
In addition, Todd and I are going to be meeting with some of the folks from Floyd County to talk about Route Eight, and we're going to be doing that tomorrow evening, and we'll pass that along, and what their thoughts are in regards to developing on Route Eight. Other than that, I don't believe that there's anything else before the board, being the-
Great knee dish.
Do you?
Sure.
This meeting is adjourned.